All right. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the North Miami Planning Commission for Tuesday, January 3rd, 2016 at 7:00 PM. Meeting in council chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Absolutely. Kenny, we'd stand for you anytime. Madam Secretary, take the roll, please.
Chair Kevin Seifert.
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny Each.
Present.
Commissioner Jason James.
Here.
Commissioner Peggy Boulay.
Do we know? Has she called? Did we have any contact with her?
Um, last week only.
Last week?
Yeah.
Well, for the moment, she's absent unless we hear otherwise.
Commissioner Bob Pishon.
Present.
Commissioner Michael McDermott.
Present.
We have four of them.
Very nice. Thank you. Counsel, would you read into the record the amendments to the agenda?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. The only amendment to the agenda that we have this evening would be the first item, which is PC 1-16, and that would be the FIU Campus Development Agreement. We have received a communique from the Florida International University to table this item for this evening, pending some kind of presentation either next month or in March.
Good evening, Nixon Lebrun, City Planner. They receive the staff report, and then they say they have, you know, there's some inconsistency they say in the staff report that doesn't reflect what they said at the last meeting. So they want that to be revised, so they say they want to have it pulled and then to the next planning commission meeting.
So there's inconsistencies between the staff report and what FIU said?
I mean, that's their claim. Their claim, because they don't agree with certain things, you know, in the staff report, so that they ask for the item to be pulled from this meeting.
Thank you.
Or vice versa.
Yeah. I mean, we could have addressed those here at this meeting, but, you know, they couldn't, so.
And, Mr. Chair, the next meeting is scheduled for January the 7th.
February 7th.
I'm sorry, February the 7th. Sorry.
So either there or it rolls into March, whenever they...
Yes, sir.
Yes, well...
The onus is on FIU to, and the statutory requirement is for FIU to present to this body and city council a completed drafted campus development agreement for the city's review, and that agreement must be, must not be in conflict with the city's comprehensive plan.
And the city's comprehensive...
When is that required to be done by? What's their deadline?
The requirement is approximately 270 days, which have already lapsed.
So effectively, they're in default already on the agreement?
Again, the onus is on them to present to this body a completed agreement for our review and advice to the mayor and city council for their review, approval or approval with conditions or denial. The statutory requirement is on them, and I have made a recommendation to the Director of Community Planning and Development to perhaps seek the advice of the city manager, no, not perhaps, to seek the advice of the city manager, to then perhaps notify the state of Florida accordingly.
Yeah. If we remember, I mean, that item was last heard back in February, almost a year ago.
Yes, it's been a year. It will be well over the 270 days.
That was in addition to the 270 days.
Right, so there's no doubt they're in default. Mr. Ernst, do you have a question?
Yeah. I was not in attendance at the February 9th meeting last year, so I was unfamiliar with what points were brought up by this body over in reviewing the memo that FIU sent and what staff report included. I saw absolutely no change with what or points brought up that this commission had recommended back in February 9th. Therefore, I want to make sure that their staff is aware of what was presented to them and that they properly add those points to what this commission asked them to put in there.
And then there was an issue about the preserve area, as raised by our dear commissioner here, and then there was the traffic, and then they were supposed to bring their own traffic consultant today, also today, and then there was also the issue of one, not East 135th Street.
Well, it's clear that the city's comprehensive plan and the residents of North Miami and the official position of our city council is such that 135th Street is not under any circumstances to be considered as an entryway into FIU.
Yes.
There is to be no development in that corridor, and they have, FIU has not acknowledged that.
I mean, there's a certain acknowledgement in, under that section 7.5.
Well...
Let's say currently.
I don't know what you call a certain acknowledgement. It's not there.
From what I gather, it looks like they only cherry picked what they wanted to put into that section 7.5 that he pointed out, addressing that issue. Therefore, he totally ignored...
I concur. I concur with you.
The points, certain points that this body asked...
The only thing that was put in point 7.5 was the city of North Miami's, what they have done in regard to that area, and FIU never raised their hand and said the word "we will," "I will," "us," "we" once. So they've never agreed to any prohibitions or promises about what they will or won't do with that area.
And then, I mean, that's like Mr. Gallos just mentioned, and then it's up to us now, you know, when we hear that item to make that recommendation, as we deem appropriate, based on what is submitted to us.
If I may, Commissioners, one of the most striking differences between the staff report and the document that they submitted for your review is section 7.5, whereas the staff report enunciates certain covenants and certain acknowledgements of the preserve, the existence of the preserve, and the city's intent of keeping that preserve, preserving the preserve. 7.5 of the agreement is just a mere snapshot of what's there now. It doesn't make any covenants. It doesn't acknowledge anything. It doesn't even acknowledge the existence of that green area that the city so cherishes. So hopefully, this would give them the opportunity to revise that issue again before they come back to you on February the 7th.
And if they do, it's, to clarify, if they do, it's within our prerogative to give the report a negative recommendation.
Yes.
Is it your prerogative to deny? Is it your prerogative to approve? And is it your prerogative to approve with conditions? Absolutely, yes, sir.
And if I just may add, just briefly, I mean, because we should move on from this because you're not here, but one of the other elements was they were to come back with a revised traffic impact study, and they've taken what was on eight pages of paper and reduced it to a chart, and it's an updated traffic impact study, and the basis for their chart is F.DOT 2010 Information, which I don't consider updated at all.
All of your issues, I think, are well addressed and aired, and let's give them the benefit of their, you know, being here so that they can answer these questions, and hopefully, they will be addressed in the next document that they present for your review. Thank you.
We will certainly move on, but, gentlemen, it behooves all of you to pay very close attention to the fine lines of their agreement, both what is said and what is not said.
You know, this, to me, looks like the Iranian deal. It's kind of slippery.
Yeah. But let's not...
I'm not trying to be facetious.
But let's not drag Washington into this.
I like the way it's worded.
Yes.
Traffic impat and aforementioned right-of-way, right-of-way, and a section of the right-of-way is currently, currently not open...
Yeah.
...to motorize vehicle traffic. I mean, so what's to stop them from saying, "Well, it was currently not, but now we want to make it open?"
Exactly right, so...
Yet this has to be absolutely nailed down.
And they're unwilling to do that at the moment.
So that's a problem.
All right, let's move on. We know what we have to deal with for next month or the month after, and let's stay focused on this one. So let's go on to public hearing number...
Can we run the minutes?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Forgot. Yep, let's get a vote on the minutes. Can we get approval on that?
Move to approve the minutes. I need to ask for an amendment to the meeting.
Okay.
I know it's minor, but actually, it kind of isn't. There was something taken out of context with something that I said. I call your attention to page three where I was discussing the bleachers and the compensation from the county. The wording was not correct, where it said Commissioner Ernst asked if the county rents the stadium for the city. I think, I believe that should be changed to "from." It's a grammatical mistake. Again, that's page three of four, top paragraph, middle, halfway down, where it says Commissioner Ernst asked if the...
From.
It should be "from the city," I believe. That could be corrected, not "for the city," but "from the city."
Acknowledged.
All right. For the city.
Oh, Ernst.
Should be "from."
Okay, so we're changing that to "from." All right, if we can so notate that amendment, do we have a motion to approve the amendment?
Move to approve.
All right, move to approve second.
Second.
All right, in favor?
Aye.
All right, amendments approved. Motion on the minutes? As amended?
So moved.
All right, so moved. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fine, minutes are done. Thank you. We'll sign that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Of course, Mr. Ernst. All right, minutes are duly signed. Thank you, Madam Secretary. All right, now, we're into the public hearings. Item five, PC 1-17.
Mr. Chair, point of order, the next item would be communications, number three.
Oh, do we have any?
Communications between the board members and any one of the applicants.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You may proceed.
Fine, thank you very much. Yeah, skipped right over that one. What do you know? All right, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, approving a tentative plat request entitled "East of Fifth Townhomes from Fifth Avenue Development LLC to subdivide two previously-platted adjacent multifamily residential lots located at 12121 Northeast Fifth Avenue and 509 Northeast 121st Street, specifically identified by Miami-Dade County Folio numbers 06-2230-031-0150, Lot 1, and 06-2230-031-0160, Lot 2, into 20 fee simple townhomes in accordance with Chapter 177 Florida Statutes, Article 3, Section 3-802 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Land Development Regulations, and Chapter 28, Section 28-7B of the Miami-Dade County Code of Ordinances, providing for an effective date and for all other purposes. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission, Nixon Lebrun, City Planner. This application, I mean, this property, there was a previous application that was, came before you for your consideration back in January last year, I mean, I think December 2014, if I'm... And then, at that time, they had applied for some floating units, you know, to create, you know, 20 residential, you know, units. This was approved by both your commission and the city council in January of last year, and then now, at first, the developer wanted to have, like, you know, condo unit, condominium. So, and then they were in the process of pulling their permits after they get all their approval, their CUP was approved, and then they came back, you know, to, I mean, for some legal purpose and because of the market conditions to create, instead of the condominium, having, you know, some fee simple unit that would be individually, you know, taxable lot, 20... So basically, so it's just a manner of cleaning up, you know, the development to allow, you know, to promote homeownership in the city and, you know, respond to the market conditions. So, and staff, you know, as we viewed it before, you know, the impacts have already been addressed, you know, to the DRC that was, you know, taking place for those, for the previous applications, and then we, they also have dealt with the Miami-Dade County School Board, you know, for school concurrency. I mean, public works have reviewed it, and then we also have, you know, our consulting surveyor to review it and then, and find, you know, the tip that, you know, submitted in compliance with all the requirements of our code, of the Miami-Dade County Code and that of the state of Florida. So based on that, you know, staff is recommending approval, you know, and then with the condition that, oh, upon approval by the city council, that they take that, you know, to the Miami-Dade County, you know, plat committee for further review and approval. Thank you.
Quick question.
All right, Mr. Ernst.
Can you give me staff's definition of fee simple?
Of fee simple, meaning that it will be like individually taxable lots. Each lot will be, yeah, yeah.
Each lot will be taxable.
Each lot, instead of having, like, you know, one big lot.
It would have its own folio number.
Its own folio number and everything.
Subject to...
You referred to these as, you referred to these as condo units originally.
No, that's what the original intent was, because that's what they get their approval. It was, you know, be building from maybe like apartment-style condo.
But we called them townhouses.
No, but now, they will be like, you know, bona fide townhouse, because they would have, you know, their own individual parcel. Every unit would have their own individual parcel and then with their own folio number.
And that's fine, but I'm trying to look at the differences in the conditional use permit originally planned. They were called townhouses.
It was apartment-style townhomes, yeah.
Yeah, but they were rental.
They were rentals.
See, they were going from rental to fee simple.
Fee simple homeownership, yeah.
Meaning taxable.
Right. Thank you, Mr. McDermott.
So whereas before, the entire development would have been owned by one entity or individual, rented out to 20 families, it's now going to be 20 folio numbers, 20 homeowners individually owning each...
So it's basically a low-level condominium, for all intents and purposes, a two-story structure.
It's a townhouse.
It's also a townhouse.
It's a townhouse condominium.
Yeah.
They'll be sold off as individual units. Okay. All right, that's not unreasonable. Okay, do we need any, the developer wishes to make any statements?
No. Damian Thomason, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners and staff, just to further kind of elaborate.
Excuse me, Mr. Thomason, what is your address and connection to the developer?
I'm sorry, sure. Yes, it's 180 Northeast 168th Street, North Miami Beach. I represent the Survey of Record Fort Lemmy Skous.
The owner?
And the owner as well, obviously.
Thank you. You may proceed.
At any rate, so as stated in staff report, there are two single-family lots, and we're now subdividing into 20. Parcel one, I'm not sure if you all have a copy of the tentative plat in front of you. Parcel one entails 12 lots, and parcel two, eight lots. Again, these will be townhomes. They will have individual owners, which is a little bit different than condominiums where you will have, these are, each lot will have its own folio, whereas a condominium, oftentimes, you think about going more vertical. These are, again, all single-family lots in townhome form, which obviously, we comply with requirement of City of North Miami, Miami-Dade County, and the state of Florida, as explained by the city planner.
All right, thank you. Anything further? No? All right. In which case, the public hearing on this is open. Anyone wishing to speak to this is invited to step forward. Second call for the public hearing. And final call, no one stepping forward. Public hearing is closed. Commission discussion. To my left?
I don't have anything.
I really don't. I mean, I'm just trying to, I was just trying to understand the difference between, what's changing here? And what's changing is it's going from a, I don't want to answer my question.
Rental, I mean, it's basically, it's the tenure of the property. As opposed, it goes, at first, it would have been winters, now you can have homeowners, because you have an individual parcel that somebody can, not just a building, but also the lot with all front yard and a backyard. They would have their own, and then that would be taxed individually.
And each of the units are independent of the other?
No, no, I mean, they're not making any changes to what was originally approved. It just, you know, they're just going to carve out, you know, those lots for each individual townhome, and then, you know, they will pay their own taxes.
So there's fire protection, one from the next, and all of...
And then, as we discussed before, and then it's going to be townhome, and maybe property owners may want to address, you know, those things, you know, if they're going to have any homeowners association to address any other issues, you know, that would probably arise, you know, because of, you know...
I think, I think maybe perhaps a couple of questions from me may answer the Commissioners' concerns, and one would be, are there any common areas, including walls? Would there be like a wall that would be shared between two homeowners?
Yes.
Okay, so therefore, is you, as a developer, are you, is it your intent to have an HOA at the very least, a homeowners association?
For the common areas, yes. That's correct.
So there will be common areas?
Yes.
And those common areas will be under a, an HOA?
Correct.
Which you will file with the state of Florida?
Correct.
The condominium documents or the HOA documents under the particular 420, I believe it is, chapter 420?
No, I don't know.
But, so, and then you will have a management company taking care of those common areas?
Correct. Yes.
It's a, okay, I get it. Commissioner Pishon, I'm not sure that these answers to the questions that I've just raised answer your own particular questions, but it is, they're going to be townhomes, individually-owned, but those, those areas that are few, but yet common areas, because they're shared by more than one property owner, would be under the jurisdiction of the HOA.
Thank you.
Sir, would you please state your name and address and relationship to this project?
Pasquale Korchmar with Fifth Avenue Development LLC. And what else?
Your address?
Oh, yes, we're the, one of the owners, yes.
And your address, sir? Where do you live?
19051 Northeast 20th Avenue, North Miami Beach.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. All right, then to my right, Mr. Ernst.
With regards to the common areas, now, both buildings could be under one homeowners association, correct?
Correct. It's just one single project with common areas around it.
And then, but even before the subdivision, there was a condition with the CUP that they had a unity of title anyway, so it's like basically, it's basically one lot right now with two folios.
The difference here is that before, the tenant would call the owner to fix something. Now, they will call the manager who manages the HOA.
Correct, correct. Now, some condos have, are self-managed, others hire a property manager firm, which at one time, my company was, so, but I just wanted to get a clarification that you had stated.
Correct. Depends usually on the size. In this particular case, there will be an HOA, like Mr. Gallos, yes. So we will set the management in order to keep the, keep up the property.
The developer turns it over to the property manager?
Correct. Correct, yes.
At one point, or they can turn it over to a person that would want to take on self-management of that.
Turnover generally occurs when a developer sells a particular percentage above a percentage to property owners.
Yeah.
So at that point, there'll be a turn, a formal turnover from the...
I don't know what the percentage is anymore.
No, no, but one safeguard, we can have, you know, that homeowners, you know, documents have to come to city staff to review it, and then, you know, just in case, you know, that becomes defunct, you know, so we have, you know, alternatives, you know, what needs to be done in case that HOA becomes defunct in the future.
Just a point, I know that a lot of buildings are focusing on millennial buyers, and this very much sort of reminds me of, because of the downsizing that you've done, but I, from what I see, it's very creative and very similar to what I've seen in a lot of articles with regards to minimal...
Yes, that's exactly correct.
...days, but yet still providing, you know, the needed...
I mean, it is.
The needed amenities and room, like two bedrooms, I believe, and you had two baths?
Correct.
And then, or two baths and then one half bathroom downstairs.
Exactly right.
So I was impressed with that, from what you presented us, even though I haven't, I had to use a magnifying glass, unfortunately, because it's very, very small, but...
We do have bigger plans in the office.
And that, you know, you're addressing those green, green issues and pretty much following a lot of the new building trends, and I commend you on that, from what I can see. I would like to see eventually the, what it looks like from the outside, not just platforming, but, you know...
We'll share it. I'll share with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mike?
Question to staff, Nixon?
Yes, sir.
As, as...
Mike, pull your mic around in front of you.
As Charles pointed out, the printing is very small. What is the square footage of each one of these units? Is it 750?
It's 1250.
1250?
750 times, actually, times six times two, because it's two stories.
It's two stories.
So it's 1250.
1250 for each unit?
Yes, and like Mr. Ernst says, it's two and a half. It's exactly right.
I don't know, I'm looking at the schematic there. It only said 700 or something.
Yeah, it was misleading, but there's another chart. I saw that too, but it's, it's...
755.
That's the lot.
It's one on top and one on the bottom.
That's the actual lot, yeah.
It's a two-story, so what they're talking about is one level being 750, the top building, top portion being 650, square feet of livable space.
No, they're not garages, right? You're going to be parking in the front.
It's living space.
Living space.
Yeah, living space. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend approval.
Well, let me get through to...
Oh, I'm sorry. I have no questions.
No questions? All right, in that case, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, hopefully, we'll see this finished by 2020.
I mean, they've already in the building, permitting stage.
Oh, yeah.
They've already started while they're doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can buy one.
That's excellent.
All right. Item PC-PC 2017, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, adopting the Local Housing Assistance Plan, L-HAP, as required by the William E. Sadowski Affordable Housing Act of 1992 and the State Housing Initiatives Partnership, or SHIP, Act for fiscal years 2017, 2018, 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020, further authorizing the city manager and city attorney to execute and submit the Local Housing Assistance Plan and any other necessary documents to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation for its review and approval, as required by Florida law, providing for an effective date and for all other purposes. Staff report, please.
For this, we have our housing manager, Mr. Mary Friends Jean Ference, that would give you overview of the staff report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Marie Friends Jean Ference, City of North Miami Housing Manager. As the staff report stated, the purpose and the intent, as per Florida Statute 393063, all counties and eligible municipalities requires to adopt, are encouraged to adopt a local housing assistance plan. The last one that was adopted was three years ago, through resolution 2014 or 46. The current one that is proposed right now, it's for years 2017 to 2020. As part of the strategy, the city usually tried to incorporate to give priorities to developmental disabled, and also, we try to adopt and maintain the same strategy we have in the past, we had in the past, such as first-time homebuyer rehabilitation, disaster mitigation, if in case we have hurricane. With the exception of this year, with the authorization of the state, we'll try to adopt the rental assistance strategy, which was, which will allow the city to assist homeowner, not really homeowner, like resident that are being displaced, up to $5,000, to assist them to move, if you did a first and last security or any expense that will maybe necessary for them to relocate them, if in case they are being gentrified or however we come. This, that would be the only difference that would be adopted in this L-HAP of this year. As such, we recommend that the planning commission adopt or approve the Local Housing Assistance Plan to subsequently go to council for approval, and it will submit it to the state for final approval.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Does any member of the commission have a question for staff? No questions, then we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this is invited to step forward. Second call, anyone wishing to speak to this? Third call. Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Thank you, commission discussion. Don't everyone speak at once? To my right, Mr. Ernst.
I believe our city attorney has a comment, I'll be glad to yield to him.
Shooting up flares, I just want to make an amendment to the staff report. While section, it's on the purpose and intent section, Florida statute section 393.063, that reference really applies to the definitions. The proper section, statutory section would be 420.9075. So I would add that amendment to the staff's report, other than that, everything's.
Very good, we accept that amendment. Now, Mr. Ernst, do we have any questions for staff on this?
No, sir.
All right, Mr. McGirmay, do we have any questions?
No, I think it's a great program.
All right, Mr. Each, do we have any questions? None. To my left.
This is essentially the program we have in place with just some preferences to subset groups, right?
That is correct, as required, is now required by Florida statute, specifically the section I just mentioned. Yes, sir. 420.
Pashon, any comments? Hearing none, did the chair call for a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mike, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pashon, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, it is 7:35. If there be no further matters to come before this commission, then we will stand adjourned.
I just want to mention, we have scheduled a few workshops, you know, for the LDR Land Development Update, I think, for next week.
Oh, next week? Are we, are we going to be told the day before?
No, no, I mean, I figured, you know, I was on vacation, I just came back today, you know, so.
Of course, of course.
I think, they must have sent you an email, but we have flowers.
No, they didn't send an email on those yet.
Okay, so we'll make sure that you guys receive an email.
Maybe tomorrow, because, you know.
Do you have the dates? Because I, I've had some conversation that there are a variety of conflicts associated with these dates.
I've seen some back and forth today also, but I think those days are pretty set, because we already, I think they're pretty set. Maybe the venue part may change, but I think, you know, this is for next week, not this week.
Oh, well, can you at least tell us the date and time and?
No, no, we'll send you an email, I will send you an email with the exact date that I.
It's a secret until you set that out, or?
No, 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 no.
You're looking right there at the paper, so.
I don't want to, because I was out, you know, I was out.
Well, it's all right, you can, we can read it if you just hand us the paper.
No, but we have the kickoff on Thursday, January 12.
So Thursday, what time?
Six, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Where, where at here?
It will be here in the city hall.
And now, this is for?
That's just for the kickoff meeting.
And what other dates do you have?
Yeah, and then. I mean, but, you know, the other dates, you know, I will communicate those to you tomorrow. Ms. Monastim will send you an email with all those two years, but that's just for the kickoff meeting. So I'm just wanting to let you know what's going on with the LDRs and zoning map update.
Just, can I make a point to staff, and Mr. McGirmay brought it up. When we get plat maps and stuff like that, is it possible that we get them so that we don't have to use a magnifying glass and that we can read all the.
So noted, so we will get you, we will get you, I mean, even the full size, or if you want half-size, we can get you.
Half-size is pretty good, 12 by 18.
Yeah.
12 by 18 is fine.
Yeah, half-size, yeah. Yeah.
Right, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. No, that was a little small.
Yeah, because we do, yeah, yeah, I agree with you.
See, but so, Nixon, we're having these in different locations around the city the following week, correct?
Yeah, the following week, but this one is just for the kickoff and then the week after, and then we have, you know, different, you know, east side, the central and the west side, yeah. So to give everybody, you know, opportunity to attend, but it's going to be the same item, it will be discussed.
And you have one on the 19th, correct?
Yes, 19 is one, but I'm not, I don't know the exact date, because I wasn't here when they were set up, but.
So you're going to get that.
Tomorrow, yeah. Yeah, because I know, as of this morning, there was some, still some exchanges. I don't know if it has been definitive or not, so, but, just, you know, keep your calendars open.
Do you notify homeowners associations, like the east side or the neighborhood associations?
Somebody write into the presidents of the homeowners with this?
Yeah, we will send, I mean, because it has been on the city website, it's been calling to Cassandra.
Yes, but not everybody goes, I've never gone to the city website, I.
No, no, yeah, because.
And the 19th is the homeowners assoc, I mean Keystone Point Homeowners Association. The city manager is speaking and all of the city elected officials have been invited. And you're going to have, and you're going to have a meeting that night.
Councilman Kiz mentioned that today in an email.
You really can't very well do the workshop on the 19th.
No, no, I mean, so, again, you know, those are some tentative dates that we have, and I was just trying to communicate.
Yes, well, there's an obvious conflict for the 19th, so we have to not do that.
I agree.
Right, okay, good, just want to make sure we're in agreement on that.
No, no, definitely. There's another major announcement in.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I'd just like to, thank you, this board, all incredible journeys must come to an end. And I would, I'm excited, both excited and sort of depressed to announce this evening that this will be my last meeting, representing this board. I have taken a brand-new position with the Miami Parking Authority for the city of Miami.
What?
After 10, after 10 years of serving this board, I thank you. You have truly inspired me with your motivation and it's been your commitment to this city and to this board that has kept me going many, many times, over and over, so I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
So you're done tonight, and we're going to miss you.
We're going to miss you.
What is your official position with Miami Parking Authority?
It's senior, it's a very long title, Senior Advisor to the Chief Executive Officer of the Miami Parking Authority.
So you're going to be responsible for parking in Miami?
Keep that a secret.
That's an unenviable position, I bet.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
That means you'll be somewhere in the downtown area.
Yes, sir, very close, right across the street from the federal courthouse, yes, sir.
Well, you know, we.
We're neighbors.
Yes, once, once you are ensconced in your, what I hope will be a windowed office.
It is, 11th floor.
Very nice.
Good for you.
Who's the current chairman now?
Art Noriega.
And has there been a?
He's been the chair, he's been the chief executive officer for many, many years. Ironically, while I was serving the city of Miami as an assistant city attorney, I have written at least one opinion involving the agency back in 2005, which is still published today.
Well, congratulations. After my brief tenure, I will miss you. Who's going to take your role?
I believe for now, it's going, it's going to be Jennifer Lynn Warren, she would be stepping in. And she's very capable and knowledgeable, and I will fully train her before I leave, so you're not disappointed. And you, I think everybody in this, all the commissioners here have my cell number, so that will not change. Please stay in touch.
Congratulations, but gosh, we're going to miss you.
I will certainly miss all, everybody here in the city.
Can we change you to your desk over here at City Hall, so you can't leave?
Just for the record, Roland, what is your cell number?
Not on camera.
I'll be more than happy to give you that information upon adjournment.
We're off the record, I see. In that case, is there anything further to come before the council? Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Turn off the mics. What is that number?